All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone, and we appreciate you coming in tonight. Will you call the roll, please?
Bachman.
Here.
Henning. Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here. Okay, again, thanks for coming in. It looks like we have two special presentations tonight. The first one, Mr. Coons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So, as you guys know, we do the VIP every season, and tonight, we are here to recognize the winner of the 2021 Summer VIP. Mr. and Mrs. Smith are a two-time winner now. Their property at 215 Prospect Avenue beat out a probably seven or eight other properties that were nominated by their neighbors, and they won very easily with the people that do the voting here in the office. So, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. and Mrs. Smith up to the podium, and Mr. Mayor, if you'd come down to present their awards, and we'd like to say congratulations on winning once again.
Congratulations, yeah, we appreciate the work you do on your home. Okay, thank you so much for coming in. Okay, so our second presentation, we're gonna have Chief Garver start off with the Fire Department Collaboration Update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we've been doing the Fire Collaborative for a little bit over a year, so we thought it was important to actually come back to you and discuss and talk about how it's going based on the discussion that we had back in March of 2020 now, so. So, the first thing, as a collaborative, we actually decided that we're gonna start all on the right foot, and we actually create a mission statement for the collaborative. And instead of the fire chiefs making that mission statement for them, or the city managers in our meetings, we brought in the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association. And the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association met with seventeen different members of the collaborative through all different levels of the rank. And they spent two days hashing out what they thought this collaborative meant to them and the community, and how that could actually go into a mission statement, core value statements, and just general practices. And we actually got a five-page document back from them, but this is actually our mission statement to, "We unite to provide superior services to our community through professionalism, reliability, and integrity." One of the things I took away from that, once we talked to the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association after the fact, was when they usually have a group come in and they say they're gonna want to meet with a collaborative, they really start to cringe, because it's usually people are being forced to be there. It's not something that was well-received. It was something forced upon the communities. And when they started talking to these individuals in that meeting and saying, "What are the benefits of this collaborative?", they had to tell them to stop. And the negatives, there's, nobody's perfect, so there were some negatives, but they're like, "It's less than what was on your hand", and the negatives, and we filled up a whiteboard of positives, not only for the department, for the community. He goes, "That is unheard of." He goes, "Everybody, we're willing to participate in this discussion", which is another thing that was really not common to that practice. So, I give our employees kudos for being bought into the collaborative, because if they're not, it's not a success, and for speaking up and, you know, just doing the groundbreaking thing of just making mission statements and value statements for the organization. And I'll remind you why we even discussed about having a collaborative back a year and a half ago. Obviously, we have a large area to cover with eighteen point two square miles, and we tried to do that with two fire stations and six to seven people on duty a day. Response times, the crews can attest to you, I'm very harsh on response times. It's one of those things, it's a measurable thing that's always constant that we can keep track of, and we can control that to a certain degree. So, we want to make sure response times were in that five-minute mark, and we'll discuss that. Availability of qualified, part-time employees. This is still a problem across Ohio, across the nation. It's now becoming moving to the availability of full-time personnel. There are departments around us that are well-known and have put out for full-time positions that are making very good money, and even for three positions, they get six applicants. So, it's very difficult to find personnel, period, coming into the fire service. Adequate staffing at both stations, or at stations, period. When we were trying to staff both stations, we discussed that we only had two people out there, and they were very limited. And we have a minimum staffing back in those days, and we pulled people from this station, Station A5, to staff Station A4. So, we were running both stations with two and sometimes three here, which is not very good when we're talking about multiple calls and doing the calls that we do. But we were doing the best we could with the staffing we had available. And then, obviously, capital expenditures. How do we reduce our capital expenditures and save the city's money? So, we'll start going through each one of those items. Response times, so this is a recap. In 2001, that's basically when we were paid on-call, and we were in that ten-minute response time timeframe. In thirteen, eighty-four's district, or eighty-four's district response time was eight and a half minutes, but we didn't have any volunteers anymore, so we were responding from Station A5 to do that. So, that's when we had the discussion, said, "We're gonna open up Station A4, because we gotta try to reduce their response times." In sixteen, it was down to five minutes and fifteen seconds. We had staffing out at Station A4. Since the collaborative has begun, Clayton's overall citywide response time is now four minutes and twelve seconds. I will tell you right now, that is basically unheard of. If you look at national averages, they're usually in the seven to eight-minute range, and we are in the four minutes. If you take the collaborative as a whole, as a whole community, we are actually under four minutes as a collaborative. So, the response times have made a huge difference in how we staff and how we do these stations. District A4, that was a concern as well. We're closing a station. We still have three stations that are gonna respond to different areas in that district, and some are gonna be a little bit longer, some are gonna be shorter, some would stay the same. But when we look at the average right now, it was five minutes and fifteen seconds in sixteen, now it's four minutes and fifty-four seconds. So, we are under that five-minute mark again, even in District A4, with closing Station A4 and relocating that staffing to Station A5. Station A5's response time is four minutes and four seconds, pretty close to four. Like I said, that is, that is an excellent response time. When we talk about goals for five minutes, there's some standards out there that we try to meet that are national standards. So, we have always made a standard for us back in the day, saying, "We wanna be on ninety-five percent of our calls in eight minutes or less." That is, that's a big undertaking for our size, and we were doing that about ninety-four percent of the time back in nineteen. Now, when you look at it, we're actually doing that same percentage of ninety-four percent, we're doing it in seven minutes. So, again, all these different statistics and time just says, everything is going down. We are getting better on our response times, which is better to that community. When we talk about, does ten seconds really matter? Fire doubles every thirty seconds, and if you don't have advanced life supports within five to six minutes, your chances of survival drastically reduce. So, yes, ten to thirty seconds does make a difference. Staffing. When we talked about staffing back in the day, Station A4 was actually closed a month, month and a half every year, so there was nobody out in that area, just because we did not have the staffing for it. There are three stations that are actually closer in certain areas out there, so it made sense to close that one down and reallocate response areas to those other stations that are staffed. Our average staffing back in the day, when we had both stations, just depending on, you know, when we were open, when we were closed, was about five people a day. The average staffing at this station over here was three and a half. So, and now our average staffing is six people at this firehouse, and we did not raise our budget to do that. It's just sharing people, sharing resources, and reallocating of responses. Average, our apparatus is no longer short-staffed either. That's one of the things that we put in our MOU, that we have to have a minimum staffing of five people all the time for our engine or medic combined, and that is absolutely wonderful. And we have been able to maintain that with additional staffing and utilizing other Inglewood staffing as well, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Just so you guys are still aware, we still utilize part-time staffing. We still utilize two part-time people out of our six every day, so we still heavily rely on this part-time staffing. So, I just wanna make sure you guys didn't think we transferred to full-time or anything like that, but we still utilize part-time staffing. Capital expenditures. That's one of the things that we talked, that's where we're gonna save the most money. Operational, we're not saving money because we're still doing the same operations we've always done in the past with the same amount of people. We just moved it from one station and combined them into one versus two. So, operational, I'll talk about some savings on the operational side, but that's not where we saw the biggest savings. Our biggest savings is gonna be on the capital side. If you look at what's coming up in the capital expenditure budgets as far as planning goes that we've had, in 2024, we're supposed to replace a medic. Due to the fact that we're in this in the collaborative, we will not replace that medic, because it's not, we don't need it anymore. So, that's a $250,000 saving. In 2025, we're due to replace an engine, but because we became a collaborative, we do no longer need that engines, $550,000. So, just so you guys see what's coming down the road, sometimes it's not immediate. We don't see those immediate savings. Over the next three years, we will save $800,000 in capital expenditures because of the collaborative. Again, we're still looking at 1.6 over a fifteen-year period, but in the next three, yes, we are looking at $800,000 in savings that we would've had to spend if we were not formed up with a collaborative. Operational expenditures. Talking about where we have saved on the operational side, because our battalion chiefs actually run the day-of-the-day operations in emergency scenes and manage the staffing every day for all three communities, we actually get shared staffing from Inglewood when we have somebody off. Our first person that's not on the schedule that took vacation, or is called off, or is sick, we actually get a person from Inglewood to cover that, and we don't have to pay for that. If we did not get that, we'd have to pay the overtime to cover that, and so far, that's about $69,000 this year, and we are expected to save about a hundred and four, almost a hundred and five thousand dollars on the operational side, just because we share our battalion chiefs with those communities, so they share some of their people with us. So, that's something we really didn't plan for, but it's occurred, and still, a hundred and five thousand dollars is a significant amount to our operational side of our budget. We've also had some savings in our trainings and EMS equipment, or equipment purchases, because we're doing it together. And also, when we took all of our equipment supplies that all three communities have, we have a pretty big cash. So, and if somebody needs a nozzle, before we go buy a nozzle, "Does anyone have a spare nozzle?" "Yes, I do. Here you go." So, those little things add up when you say, everything in the fire service is expensive, so every, you know, every time you buy something, you buy a nozzle, it's a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. That adds up when you do that twenty or thirty times a year. On the training side, we're doing joint trainings, and now that we are, we have enough people to do certain trainings and be on certain teams throughout the county, they're actually providing some training to us for free. We are now part of the Region Three Rescue Team. Not only did they provide a water asset to us, and what I mean by that, they actually provided a boat, all the equipment, the trailer, and everything at a price of about sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars, and they gave it to us. Because we're, as you see, we've had people in West Virginia, we've had people down the Stillwater River over the last twelve months, we've actually probably got eighteen, probably, eighteen water techs now, and probably thirty water operations people now, that we can deploy in our area and throughout the state with this state resource. And that would be one of the capital improvement items that we would look down the road to purchase, but because of that, we do not have to do that. They provide the training to us. It's free when they come and do it, and we use their resource. Also, right now, we're actually, there's every single officer on the fire departments from all three organizations are actually taking an incident safety officer class to Ohio Fire Academy. And because there's three departments doing it, and we have that many people involved in it, it's free. So, just by joining up, we are using, we're taking advantage of everything that we can get through free classes, reduce costs, whatever we can do to save money. Success. Is this really being, is this really successful? I'm gonna press out this saying by saying, when we take three fire departments and put it together like we did, we're taking like three companies who do something very similar and trying to make them, and merge them as one. Are there challenges with that? Absolutely. Is there an upside to that? Absolutely, or we wouldn't be doing it. These three companies wouldn't have merged, because they think they can do something better or make it more profitable. We're doing the same thing. Not that we're gonna be perfect out of the gate, not that we can't improve, because we can. There are a lot of challenges. There are a lot of meetings, as the same manager can attest, because we have been here about every week, to try to make sure we do the best for the community. Why is this working in our area? Mostly because we have buy-in. We have buy-in from our employees, and at the chief level, no one is sitting there saying, "It has to be my way." Even at the city manager level, no one's saying, "It has to be my way." It's basically, what is best for the community, and we all work together to make this work. That's why some communities cannot make this work, because they cannot give up that control. We are willing to do what's best for the community regardless of your personal endeavors or your personal opinions. The other thing, people are watching. I will tell you right now, not only people in this area, people in this state, people outside of the state. We have got calls from Pittsburgh, we've got calls from Michigan, we've got calls from Warren County, saying, "How are we doing this, and is it successful?", and when we tell them how we're doing a success that we are, they can't believe it, and they wanna see, "Can you guys bottle that up and sell it?" So, we are being watched, and we're make, we gotta make sure it is a success, but it's so far, it is very successful. I don't think anybody on the department or in the command staff, or even at the same manager level, will say, "This wasn't the right thing to do at this point." Yes, so when I say, "Was this a success?", absolutely, this was a huge success. With the tremendous amount of work that still needs to be accomplished to obtain our goals and reach the vision that we have for the collaborative, we still got a long way to go, but it's only gonna get better. So, we appreciate the fact that council was willing to go into that endeavor, especially with our history, so we appreciate that, and I'll be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Chief?
Yeah, are we gonna turn this into the three cities combining into one, Brian?
That's for a later date. I mean, people say, "Should we become a district?" There are things that go with a district that will still cause this problem that's not advantageous at this point. So, we're not trying to force anything on anybody or say we have to go to a district. Let's take it one step at a time, make sure we do it the right way, and do what's best for the community. I'm not saying that that's not gonna happen down the road, but right now, if you ask me, should we form a district, I will tell you no.
Well, we had a district before.
I know, exactly, yep. Chief. That's just being honest.
I was wondering, you know, with the staffing concerns, and you said that this has helped with your staffing concerns. Are all three municipalities pay scales pretty similar, or is that another, like, do we not lose an employee, Union now, or Union to Inglewood?
So, actually, our, when you look at our career staff between, Union doesn't have full-time staff except for the Assistant Fire Chief, so we're not gonna compare with that. But at the bargaining side of it, we are within $400 of each other on salaries. Part-time wise, we're within, you know, we're very competitive on the part-side side. I'm not gonna lie, Union's a little bit higher on the part-time side, because they have more part-time people and not the full-time side. Us and Inglewood both are in the fifteen-fifty range, and Union's at the eighteen-dollar range for part-time.
I have a question. This is, if you could just like, give us the highest answer here, not, because this is a complicated issue, but, so we've talked in the past about like the facilities, so how does the, how has the collaboration addressed that? Like, if we have to build a new firehouse, where's it gonna be, and have you talked about that at all?
Why, yes, we have. We've talked about it at the chief level, and I've even had conversations with Amanda. You know, when we start to have that discussion, we will, it needs to say, "Okay, have somebody come in and tell us where we need this firehouse. Let's not try to do it ourselves." And then, we gotta see, if they tell us where it needs to be, they shouldn't usually, they usually will give you, you know, several options. And then, you gotta figure out whether you, if they don't say, "Put it here", or maybe somewhere else they put it, do we even have land that we can, that we own, or we can obtain? If you can't, that option's off the table to begin with. So, we're, that's on our radar, but we need to do what's best for everybody involved, but also still protect the city of Clayton. The one thing I am always concerned about is this can be done undone at any time. I don't know that'd be a good idea, but you never know. So, I need to make sure we protect and make sure we keep a fire station in the city of Clayton. So, if we really look at it and say, "Oh, it needs to be at Winger and Taywood", well, that's not protecting the city of Clayton if this would ever be undone, because now we don't have any fire stations in the city. So, we're looking at all those options. I can't tell you what that answer is gonna be. I want someone to give us the options, so we can pick and do what's best for us.
So, a projection of time. I know you've kinda answered all those, but do you have a projection of time when you would consider building something, or the need to?
Well, the need is already there, and we've talked about this two years ago, and we are not looking at moving up our timetable whatsoever. You know, we have a plan to work that financially and things, as long as things remain the same, you know, we will start having those discussions in twenty-three to hopefully start building in twenty-four. But again, that's because the financial plan, we have to pay some things off for the fire department that we see. The crews are good with that, and the crews bought into that. Yes, it's not the best, it's not the most spacious, but they know, as long as something is coming, that we will be willing to sit here and fix it, deal with this, maintain it, and they're good with that. I mean, but yes, it's on the radar still. Our plan is still to build in 2024, unless something changes financially.
So, then do we start those stations, consultants next year, early quarter one?
I would say, especially with the way the market is right now, it's gonna be a guess if we start in 2022. Yeah, I would say we start those things in 2023, honestly. We're already having conversations. It's not like you can't do anything, but if we say, "You need to tell us to do something", that's where the money comes involved, because they gotta do the studies. And I say we would do that around 2023, so we can know what we're gonna do come 2024 and go ahead. Building a firehouse does, it takes time. It's not gonna just happen overnight. You're talking, usually by the time we say we're gonna do it, it's probably eighteen to twenty-four months out before we'll actually have something finished.
Anything else for Chief? Okay, well, thanks. Every bit of feedback I've ever had's been positive, so that's, I'd say, congratulations, you know, to you and also to.
To all the chiefs.
Andy and Zach, and yeah, everyone.
All, everybody involved. It's just not one of us.
Everybody did a really good job, so we appreciate that.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. All right. So, the next thing on the agenda is Clark's report.
You have before you the council meeting minutes of October seventh, 2021.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. We have no old business tonight. We do have one resolution under the new business category. Will you read that resolution, please?
Resolution R-102156, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a delinquent debt collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney General for collection of delinquent municipal income taxes.
Kevin?
Evening. When me and Amanda were meeting with CCA, talking about them being on-site more often to help residents, and they put up the dropbox outside, they brought up the option of going with the Attorney General's office to help us with some of our delinquent collections. Currently, we get a list from CCA where they've been sending letters out, haven't got response, and we monitor, you know, how high these delinquent taxes are, and when it's feasible to go after them with Martina, she sends letters out, and then eventually, if we have to, we file in court to try to get the collection. This way, we can still send letters out. Instead of going to court, we can go to the AG's office, and they can, we can certify those delinquent taxes to them, and they will be able to collect those taxes from individuals' federal tax refunds. And it should be quicker, sometimes quicker than what we're getting with the payment plans we have to set up once we get to court, or the payment plans we do with Martina. They said they're seeing pretty good response with other cities doing this.
How much money are we talking about, Kevin?
It varies each year, how much is delinquent. Right now?
The last time you looked at it, how much was?
Usually, I don't pay attention to the whole, I only look at the bigger ones, because it doesn't, it's not feasible for us to go after a hundred-dollar tax bill if we're gonna spend, you know, two-fifty in legal fees. So, we did have some substantial this year with even withholding remittances. We had some issues, and we've been dealing with that, so. But we do have some that, you know, are up there like five thousand dollars that they're owing us, and then there's plenty of interest on there as well.
Doesn't the AG use local law firms to collect this money?
No, just.
Dennis? I know we had one call, and it came from a law firm here in town.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. So, a segment of my firm, I don't, but a segment of my firm is under contract with the Ohio Attorney General's Office to do collection work. I'm not sure that this would fit into that, because it sounds like what you're talking about is withholding from their federal income tax.
A newer program they came out with.
However, just as an abundance of caution, I would probably abstain from voting on this resolution.
Other questions or comments on this?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve as written, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Would you call roll, please?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Abstain.
And Stevens.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So, that's all for the new business today. We'll go to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple items for you this evening. One, I wanna remind everyone that Costumes and Carvings is this Sunday over at Meadowbrook from one to three p.m. At the last meeting, there was brief discussion about grass violations within the city, and council requested additional information regarding the number of violations in the process that we currently have. That's outlined in the city manager's report here. I will tell you that it's, recently, it was June eighteenth of 2020, not 2021, that council did already amend, or did amend the ordinance to allow five days rather than three days to bring violations into compliance, and that brought us into compliance with the ORC. Currently, we have cited a hundred and eighty-five, or we had put notice out to a hundred and eighty-five, we've put out a hundred and eighty-five notices, I'm sorry, year-to-date. Of those, I think we cut approximately forty percent of those, and it comes down to about twenty lots that we cut regularly. And those lots are vacant lots, there's not someone living there. So, I'm, and if you look, in 2018, we had three hundred and fifty-four violations, 2019 was two hundred and twenty-seven, 2020 was two hundred, and then in 2021, as of this report, was one eighty-five. And the reduction from 2018 to 2020, you know, was based on the property at North Clayton being marketed and being taken care of by the company that was marketing the property. So, in all, I think we cut about point four percent of the properties in the city, is what the city has been regularly cutting.
Even if nobody lives on them, Amanda, somebody owns them, right?
Yes, someone does own them, yes. And they are repeat offenders. Yes, someone does own them, yes. And they are repeat offenders.
Anything, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, anything else?
Well, I mean, I think the, the question was raised whether or not we wanted to amend the, the current ordinance, if we wanted to have the law director do that. And so that's what I'm looking for a direction. Now that you have this information, is that still something that you wanna pursue?
I mean, I would still be in favor of amending it to be strict. That would be my thing, caveat that Mr. Lieberman said last time. If individuals have some type of hardship, the, an exclusion or whatever, um, I have to disclose that now to make it, you know. But I, I would be in favor of Martina creating something more strict. I mean, representing a ward that's very dense with homes. When one person doesn't do it, it looks really bad. And, um, it's obviously different in other parts of the city. So I know from the residents that have had issues with properties and war too, that const- or constant repeat offenders, they would like to see something more strict done.
I think I would, uh, go along with part of that. I think we, instead of, um, revamping, you know, everything, I think we need to, if anything, probably focus on the repeat offenders a little more. Maybe if we could, you know, if, I mean, it sounds to me like, I, I don't know, a hundred and eighty-five year-to-date. I mean, I guess it sounds like a lot, but I don't know, I don't know how that is compared to, you know, other cities and things. But if we have, uh, uh, let's see, you had, there's probably, how many did you say on here?
So.
That get cut four to five times a year?
Twenty lots. So we have five thousand housing unit lots.
Yeah.
And then we cut twenty a year or twenty of those regularly.
So maybe we could focus on those twenty or, 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 you know, or, or a repeat. Yes.
Um, when you guys say more strict, you do understand that there is a limit that constitutes high grass. It's eight inches. We go out there all the time and measure. We have pictures that Darryl goes out there with a clipboard that has eight inches on the tape. We, we measure it. When you say more strict, what do you mean?
Xenia did would be considered more strict?
Yeah, I mean, so what Xenia did was their ordinance says, there's this ten inches actually. So what they do is what we do now. They put out a notice in the paper at the beginning of the season with the grass cutting requirements. Um, then if it gets above, uh, you know, ten inches in their case, uh, then they send a notice to the owner to cut it. At that point in time, if that same piece of property gets above ten inches again, they go in and cut it because by that point, they've had the notice in the paper and one written notice. Ours, we do the notice in the newspaper and then after the second notice, we send them a notice saying from this point on, we're gonna cut it if it gets above eight inches again.
And I understand that. They still have to go out there and measure the grass, correct?
Yeah.
Do they cut every single day in Xenia?
I do not know that.
Because the problem here is that our service department only has the capacity to cut grass once a week. Darryl goes out on a weekly basis, measures the lots. As soon as those lots are determined to be meet at that threshold that they're over that in, eight inches, we do the notification. But regardless, when they get sent over, our service department's still cutting them as soon as possible the following week. So right now it's five days. Darryl goes out on Thursday. He puts a sign in the yard after he measures, confirms that it's eight inches or above. Tuesday, he goes out, re-checks them, and then they get sent over to our service department and our service department cuts them on Wednesday. Our service department cuts grass on Wednesdays. They don't have the capacity to cut multiple days a week. So, but that, that goes into my question is if we're being more strict, wh- what, that timeframe isn't changing at all. Regardless if we're notifying them once at the beginning of the season or Darryl's going out there and just checking again. Our service department only cuts on Wednesdays. It's, there, there, there's no lapse in time. So I mean, that, that's my only question is I'm trying to figure out what you guys mean by more strict.
So what you're saying is even with the one notice like Xenia's, it's still not gonna make a difference when, when it gets cut?
Not at all, no. Because our service department only, only has the capacity to cut grass because there's only, you know, I, I think it's like fourteen people that work in the service department. Uh, nine? Thank you. Is it twelve? Okay. So part-time, I mean.
And we, I mean, we can't keep a notice, don't we?
Yeah, I mean, you have to keep it five days. You know, i- if you go any, what you're running up against then is what we talked about before is the due process, giving them notice and an opportunity to correct it.
That's where my confusion is.
So let me, let, let me suggest that we we ought to look at, um, what the mayor suggested is for repeat offenders having different, um, consequences for the violation.
So, so different, like, th- so the fine increases.
Right, the fine increases with every.
I thought when we were discussing this, it was going to be better for Darryl. I thought that was part of our goal too, was to make it so Darryl was situated better than what he's doing now.
I, I don't, and I've spoken with Darryl about this. I don't believe it changes anything. Darryl still has to go out there and measure the grass to confirm that it's over eight inches. You're literally, you're, I mean, there's, there's nothing that you're changing for him because he still has to go out to the properties and confirm to, on the re-inspection because we make sure the grass is at eight inches. So when there are appeals, which is something that we did, we added to the code last year. So when there is an appeal to the penalty and they say, my grass wasn't eight inches, we're able to produce photographic evidence that, no, it was eight inches and that's the reason we cut it. And then when the service department goes out there, they take a picture of the grass also. So we could, we, we document everything the whole way through. The only thing that we would be eliminating from what was being proposed from what's the city of Xenia does is putting a sign in the front yard, which Darryl takes the sign with him when he has the camera to take a picture and he puts the sign in the front yard. But that, that's the only thing. Because we still have to give them due process. We're still cutting those properties as soon as they hit our limit. Now, if you wanna reduce it from eight inches to six inches, which I would recommend against, because you're creating a whole nother issue. We're cutting those properties as soon as they get to eight inches. I mean, we, I mean, we are. But our service department only has the capacity to cut so, so many times. I think if you wanna increase the penalties for repeat offenders, that makes sense to me.
And I could, I can look at ways to address the quote-unquote repeat offenders. The thing you gotta watch there from a legal perspective is you can't make it so high that it constitutes an unconstitutional penalty. And that's what you get in. Once you start making it too high, they're gonna challenge it and you're gonna lose on that one. Um, but I can see if there are other ways.
I don't think the mayor meant doubling it or tripling it, but maybe adding ten, you know, something. I, I don't know.
And I'm thinking if you add ten dollars, they're gonna, it's not gonna ma- I, I wouldn't think it's gonna make much difference, quite honestly.
Martina, why don't you, well, I, I'm not gonna tell you what to do, but perhaps you may consider, uh, doing a little research and seeing what the limitations are, uh, because, uh, I mean, if, if it's, what do we charge in the mall?
I think ours is about a hundred bucks, isn't it, Jack, if I remember correctly? That's what I thought.
So we charge them the, the, the fees associated with, with cutting the grass and then what is it? Is it a two hundred dollar fee or is it a hundred dollar fee? So I, so, so, so I think it's a two hundred dollar fee because it's usually, and that's per, it's a breakdown. I think it's like an acre below or something like that. So.
Are they paying it?
Um, we assess most of them to, to, to the pro- to the property taxes because most of them are absentee property owners.
Right.
I, I think if you look at the numbers here from twenty oh, twenty eighteen until twenty twenty-one, it almost is a half. It went from three fifty-four to one eighty-five. So I think something that we're doing is working.
I would agree with you. I think the majority of that drop happened from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen when there was approximately thirty to thirty-five lots in the village of North Clayton that we were citing each and every individual lot so that each and every individual lot was being assessed the appropriate amount of fees and fines. So you, when you lost thirty-five times four, because we were cutting those lots about four times a year. If you do the math, I believe that pretty much accounts for why there was that drop. Between four and five times.
How many times are you cutting them now?
Between four and five times a year. So, so that, that, that drop between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen really is primarily because of Village of North Clayton. Outside of that, it's been pretty consistent. We're very lucky in the city of Clayton, the fact that the majority of the property owners take care of the properties. We do have a handful of vacant, empty lots and they've been vacant and empty for, for at least five years. I, I assume longer. Um, and those are the ones that we cut on a consistent basis. Primarily the re- primarily, once, you know, you get a rental property or something else, or someone forgets, or someone's been on vacation and we go out there and we put the sign on, in, in, in the yard, what we hear primarily is people wanna see that sign so that they know that the city is responding to the violation or the concern. And then when they get the, that invoice, that first time when they're a new, when they're a new person, then they freak out. And we explain to them, the reason that we have that two hundred dollar fine on top of the, the associated cost, it's a deterrent. We don't want you guys to rely on the city of Clayton to come out and do, and, and do your landscaping for you. Because if we took, because we did, if we didn't have the penalty, we didn't have the fine, you know, it'd be fifty, sixty dollars. Um, but once they get that invoice, they usually make sure that they cut the grass from, from there on out. The ones that we have to cut on a repeat basis are the ones that are, aren't there anymore and they're absentee landowners and.
Four tenths of one percent of the properties in the city, I don't think it's too bad to begin with, Jack. These are the numbers that you gave us, Amanda. It, it's four tenths of one percent. I, I mean, uh, as much to do and not about nothing at.
So Kenny, do you think that, um, looking at possible raising consequences for repeat offenders is something you could live with on this?
Yeah, I, that's fine. Well, I mean, if Mr. Coontz is saying that they're comfortable with what they're doing, I'm fine with that. Um, I, I mean, I'd like your opinion. Do you think that's raising it or just keeping it as is? I don't.
I think our, I think our weed abatement program is successful. Um, in terms of the penalties and the fines, to me, I'm, I'm indifferent to if you guys raise it fifty dollars or whatever you guys determine is a, is a fair amount for repeat offenders. I think there's a benefit to going after repeat offenders harsher than someone that forgets or that is out of town for a couple of weeks or there's some sort of life circumstance that has prevented them from cutting grass. I, I do think, you know, going after the repeat offenders, I, I, I think there's some merit to that. Um, but I think overall, our weed abatement program, I think is very good. And I, I personally don't have an issue with it. I'm, I'm proud of the way we, we, we go after it. Um, I think if you go around the city, you don't see a lot of high grass. As you go in a lot of cities around the community, around Montgomery County, you'll see empty lots all over the place with grass this high because it's taking the communities that long to respond. Our grass doesn't, now, that's not to say that sometimes there's a property with a backyard that we didn't know about and no one told us about. I mean, there are there's circum- circumstance. I'm not saying we're perfect, but I'm very proud of what the job that Darryl does. I think Darryl busts his hump out there, so.
And, and I think we already kinda have that in the circumstances of, I know I had it with, with my next-door neighbor last year that, you know, they received a letter, you know, basically due to the condition of their property and, you know, we, they, myself and them contacted you. It's like, okay, you know, we figured this out, so it didn't even need to do a, the true appeal process. So to cover kind of those circumstances where, you know, someone might not be able to. I, I think we've currently already got that covered just by, you know, people contact the city and talk to them. It's like, okay, here's a situation. We can, we can cover that.
So I thank you, Mr. Coontz, for that. So I would like to see us increase the penalties if we can, if Martinez says we can, for repeat offenders that don't come to us with some type of medical disability, et cetera, as to why they're not doing it.
They'll have the same appeal process.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
At least so, at least so we can say we're doing something. I like the way that Mr. Coontz worded that, honestly.
Jack, can I ask a question real quick? Are these properties out of the repeat offenders, are they bank-owned?
Majority of them are, to be honest with you. Uh, honestly, I mean, we've been pretty fortunate here in the city that most of the bank-owned properties do a pretty good job of maintaining them. Um, I mean, these are people just, they've got, you know, sometimes it's, it's a divorce or some, some sort of separation. Sometimes there's a bankruptcy or a foreclosure. A lot of times, you know, you deal with bankruptcies and the way the bankruptcy court works, you know, the, I mean, the bank doesn't record those properties in their name until the very end of the process. So people have been kicked out of the properties even though the property's still listed in their name. It's those types of circumstances.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, Amanda?
Thank you. Um, just as a reminder, uh, we have a work session next council meeting, November fourth at six thirty P M regarding multifamily development and the rural conservation district in Plan Clayton. Um, and then staff is also requesting a work session on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to discuss the twenty twenty-two budget. Um, if, is that okay with council to schedule that? Okay. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Any questions or comments?
Um, did Mr. Gorman tell you that, uh, Mike?
He did, and I got ahold of him and his name has been passed along.
Thank you. People now? We need two more?
Eight. Tina just sent me one, so yes.
One more.
Yeah, the charter review commission.
Charter review board.
Okay, anything else for Amanda?
Yes, Amanda, I, I was asked a question this, this week while I was at work temporarily. Um, a person asked me why the city of Clayton doesn't have a no solicitation policy like the city of Inglewood.
We do have, we don't have a no solicitation, solicitation policy. I think that would be against the First Amendment for us to do that. Um. We do have a, well, we do have a registration process and we do have a list. If someone wants to be on the list to have people not come to their homes, they can call the city and we can put them on the list.
I guess the, the question this person had was that there apparently are people like, like Oakfield up around that area that are going around knocking on doors. And his concern was his wife and small children are at home during the day and he says, I don't like the fact you have someone come down the street knocking on doors. And he goes, obviously they're knocking on doors. They're not checking in with the city. And it's like, how do we have some?
They can also, have they put up a no solicitation sign?
To tell you the truth, I got a no solicitation sign at my door.
They still knock on your door?
And he's still knocking on the door.
So my recommendation to the person who asked you the question at work would be, um, to one, have them call the city and have them placed on the do not solicit list that we have. And then if someone does show up at their door and they have the do not solicit list, they can call the city again and an officer will come out there.
But we have a list?
We, we do have a list, yes.
But I guess I should put my name on a list.
Better be careful next time you want your petitions, uh, signed up.
Well, I think political entities are exempt from the no solicitation, correct? This, this was not that. This was somebody who wanted to get, who wanted to cut our trees. It's not from the city.
Anything else, Greg? Anything else? Anybody for Amanda? Okay, thank you. So, uh, next we'll move to visitors' comments. I see we have some visitors in the gallery here. Anyone wanna speak tonight on anything? Andy, anything? Okay, hearing nothing. We're gonna move on. We'll go to council, um, comments. Uh, Dennis, we'll start with you.
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Tina?
I just wanna say to the chief, Garber, that's an amazing report and I think it's wonderful with this collaboration. It's grown great, beyond expected, and continue the process. And I think we're just all amazed. Thank you so much.
Greg?
I will add to that as far as the collaborative operational service, especially since I actually had to use it again back in, end of September. Um, since I had a, a medic from Inglewood and the rest of the crew from the city of Clayton, that I do appreciate the fact that people were able to respond fairly quickly to my, my situation. My dad, my dad is okay. He did manage to fracture his shoulder, but other than that, he came through okay from his fall. He was doing what he wasn't supposed to do. I didn't knock him down.
Good. Anything else?
On top of that, I mean, you know, it was mentioned last time about breast cancer awareness month and people wearing pink. I think we're trying to abide by that somewhat. I know, I, this is courtesy of Joyce Deetering from several years ago. So, um, just awareness of that and elections are coming up, November second. Get out and vote.
Hey, thank you. Tim?
I'd just like to congratulate the, the couple from Prospect. I'm sorry I didn't pick up their, um, their name, Mr. and Mrs. Smith and on their winning the VIP for summer, was it, Jack? Or, okay, we haven't given the following yet then, huh? Okay, and, and also congratulate Brian and whoever's on the collaborative for a, a great deal and keep the good work up, please. and keep the good work up, please.
Thank you, sir. Kenny?
I have a few things, um, a few, couple birthday things. Happy birthday, Earl. All I know is your birthday recently. I hope you had a great day. And also I must say that my son Clayton's birthday is coming up on October 26th. So it's been a year of lots of no sleep and lots of happiness. We love the little guy. Sweep Clayton clean. Thank you to the staff for organizing that. I wasn't able to make it. I had to work last Saturday, um, but I do know some residents dropped off some stuff. So thank you as always. I know the residents are very appreciative of that. Um, the fire collaborative, like Mr. Merkel said, uh, nothing but very positive things. I, I know we unanimously support you for that. And, um, providing service under four minutes is just so life-saving. I mean, my family can attest also that seconds matter. So thank you so much for that. Thank you for projecting saving taxpayers, literally hundreds of thousands, almost, almost $2 million over the course of 15 years. So thank you. Um, as another, uh, council member said, the election day is November 2nd, but you can also vote early. You can vote early tomorrow, which this won't be on in time, but it'll be open eight to five tomorrow. Next week, October 25th through the 29th, you can go to the board of elections from 8:00 AM until 7:00 PM. We'll be working. And on October 30th, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, you can vote. October 31st, Halloween, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. If you vote early on Halloween and give the sticker to your kid and they come to my house for trick-or-treat, I'll give them triple candy. Uh, and then November 1st, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Election day is next Tuesday, November 2nd, 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. So, um, some people call odd years, off years. Um, we don't believe that they're off years. We want citizens to participate and vote. And, um, I know there are individuals on the side that would appreciate that. So please get out and vote. Um, and then finally, I've seen our local stores promoting, uh, some holiday things already. Um, and I would encourage you all to start thinking to, uh, support their businesses and shop local this holiday season. Um, I think it is an exciting time for them. It's really nice to see some local entities, uh, getting preparations ready for the holidays. So I hope they all do really well. I know it's interesting with these supply chain, um, dilemmas, et cetera. But as much as we can, I know that they appreciate our support. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brendan?
Evening, everyone. First want to make a mention, you know, last week there was, you know, unfortunate occurrence at the high school and middle school had to lock down. Thankfully, it, you know, wasn't the worst-case scenario, was a false alarm. In that situation though, especially at that, at those two facilities, you're talking thousands of people, most of them children, uh, and a lot of moving parts and entities. It's really shows the professionalism and, uh, just experience of our, you know, of our police department and also of the schools and, and the multiple responding jurisdictions of, you know, of doing that, of responding to that situation properly. Um, like I said, a lot of moving parts and especially with social media and everything. I think I saw, you know, everything except for, you know, on social media that day that there was a massacre and then I saw the police chief, uh, Friday night at the football game and got the rundown. And a lot of those like, well, so that I heard wasn't true, that I heard that one, you know. So, um, just want to really point out that, you know, you hope those things don't happen. Uh, but in that situation, it, it could have been a lot worse, but thankfully, just with how professional our safety service staff is, along with just seeing what was presented to us about the fire collaborative, um, it's about, you know, it's top-notch here. And, you know, commend to them, they're always still looking ways to improve. So, um, I think that just, you know, and that doesn't surprise me. I don't think it should surprise anyone of, you, you show your successes, but then also go, well, here's how we can improve and here's how we're going to do it. Um, so just want to commend to, you know, the fire department and the police department and, uh, and the school on, on those situations. Um, I know we, we touched an hour before on Meadowbrook. Um, a few more points here. One thing to realize is Meadowbrook is, it's our one true like business operation here. And I view the option, the staff recommendation is really one, not of us really taking on more, but really taking on less and just, and farming out a lot more. Um, and there are just realities of that property that, you know, I think it can grow and expand, uh, and improve, but we're, we're not to those points yet where we can, you know, just have our one caterer and things like that. So I look at those investments that staff is recommending as, you know, those are investments in the building that will, that we should get a return on investment of. As far as it, um, you know, I know the, the figure's right around 100,000 that was between the staffing there. You have to look at that from the business perspective and I know it's in a, and, you know, my day job is in, is in business, not in government. So you look at things that way. Um, and this being our one true business entity that we have, I think it's a good way to look at it. So, um, I know a lot of options are, are going, have been presented and are going to continue to be. But March is coming up and there's a lot of moving parts to this, especially with the liquor license. So, you know, let's, hopefully we get this done soon. If it stays the way it is, it's not horrible. It just, I think, it's just going to continue to be the same and I think we're going to still continue just to, you know, tread along. Um, you know, so that's my two cents on it. Um, only other thing I'll, will say about Meadowbrook and remember Kevin and I discussing this a few weeks ago at the football game, reality is that building is a country club that was built in the eighties. The furnishings there look like one from a country club from the eighties. Now, I'm not one for, I'm very far from someone for, who could give much opinion on interior decorating. Anyone who's been to my house knows hanging up on my walls is a TV and a clock and that's it. Um, but I, I, I think that's something else to improve on the facility and that would probably be, you know, an overall, you know, minimal expense when you, when you look at it in the grand scheme of things, just of those minor updates. Uh, wanted to mention that during the workshop, uh, but didn't get a chance to. But, and that, um, like, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have one more question to ask the city manager, if I may. When is trick-or-treat, Amanda?
It is, it's a Sunday, October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00.
Next Sunday from 6:00 to 8:00?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was... Well, we also need to be careful with the kids running around and at 6 o'clock, it is almost dark now. So, um, let's be careful on the streets and have a happy Halloween.
Okay, uh, I just have two things. I just want to say also, uh, comment on the collaboration. Uh, like I said, I've heard nothing but positive feedback on that. So it's really a good thing and hopefully we can keep, you know, marching that whole idea forward. So, uh, the only other thing is, um, I hope everyone can come to the costumes and carvings on Sunday. It's from 1:00 to 3:00 this Sunday. And, um, I don't know, do we, we have everything staffed? Where we? Okay, okay. So if anybody else can bo, uh, show up to volunteer, they'll, you know, they'll be able to use the help. Uh, actually, I'll probably bring a couple additionals with me, so... But anyway, um, hopefully everyone can make it for that. So, uh, we do, uh, uh, find ourselves, um, in the position to have an executive session tonight. We have it, there's actually two topics. The first topic is to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official?
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. If I can put a fine point on that, we're not going to talk about all those issues. It's, it's just the employment and compensation of a public employee.
Okay. What Martina said. And, um, then the second topic will be to consider, um, information related to the marketing plans of a specific business strategy, production techniques, or trade secrets. So we're probably not, don't have any trade secrets, but, you know. So, okay, so is there a motion to...
I move for a short executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel for the, uh, to enter executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I was promised by Barbara that it would be short, too.
Yeah. Can we do a roll call on that?
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lee Brimman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. Okay, visitors and other staff members, we love you, but we have to kick you out at this point. Okay, we're back in session now?